If I may, today being July 24, 2018, we're meeting at 6:15, actually 6:20 right now, in the Village Boardroom for the purposes of discussing a Frontier franchise. At this time, I'd like to announce the exits to both sides, right here, for the public to know. And I believe we have some representatives from Frontier. Please, I'm going to ask you to come up and give us something that we can draw our attention to, and then hopefully we'll have some public feedback following.
Might need a stool.
We'll lower that?
I'll lower it.
Yep.
Thank you. I'm good. Oh, I'm good. Yeah, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm glad you told me where the exits are in case this doesn't go well.
There you go.
So, I'm Claudia Maroni. I'm the Director of Operations for Frontier Communication in upstate New York. And so, I handle the Monroe area. We have a very large presence right over here on Main Street of technicians and managers. And, you know, I'm really here tonight to talk about our new product, which is called Vantage TV. It's our over-the-top television product. And before I forget, I'll just -- I have several questions after the presentation. You can always get ahold of me. So, currently, we offer video services in CL Washington, Portland, Oregon, Southern Caro- California, Dallas, Texas, and Fort Wayne, Indiana, and Tampa, Florida. That's fiber-to-the-home product. We do this product, which is fiber-to-the-known and copper-to- or fiber-to-the-house, in the entire state of Connecticut, North Carolina, and hopefully soon coming to this area. So, a little bit about the product, and it is in your presentation. It's an IP-based television platform. It operates over an IP-enabled network. It offers secure, standard definition, high-definition, 4K and ultra-K high-definition. It has, we believe, a superior picture quality. It works by having a Wi-Fi-enabled set-top box. So, what we do is we come in to your home, we wire in one set-top box, and it works throughout your home with little things that we call hockey pucks. And really, what they are is wireless receivers. So, you only have one wired box. There's no wires throughout your house. You know, one of the really nice advantages of that, we have people that tell us that they want to have friends over for a game, they pick up their flat-screen TV in their hockey puck, and they walk out on the patio and hook up the game out there. So, it's very portable. It's really a nifty product.
Do you need one for each television, or just, like, if you have three floors, one for each floor?
Um, I believe it's one per TV.
Okay.
But I could be wrong on that. You're, every, one of these sessions I go to, someone asks me one, at least one question I don't know the answer to, but I can certainly get back to you on that.
Thank you.
The hockey puck is about this big. It's really a hockey puck. So, it's, it's a very small device. It offers, of course, live TV broadcast with instant channel change. You know, I'm staying in a hotel tonight, and I was there last night, and it gets, I don't know about you, it gets so aggravating. You change the channel, and then you go get a cup of coffee, because it takes that long. You know, this is, we have it hooked up in our, you know, reporting centers. It's boom, boom, boom. You hit that button, the channel changes. It has a video-on-demand library. Total home DVR records six shows at once. So, if you're really into Mad Men, as well as Grey's Anatomy, you can tape them both at the same time. It's got a next-generation electronic program guide, which has enhanced search functionality. And it integrates Twitter, Facebook, right into your guide, as well as Netflix. So, Netflix will, and I'll, it'll show you that a little later in the presentation. It'll be a channel right on your, when you hit your guide, you'll see it. So, it's one DVR, like I said, one experience, any receiver. Some of the features on page five, I already mentioned the instant channel change. You can see six different screens at the same time. I don't know why you'd want to see six different screens at the same time, but you can do it in this product.
Do you have any sports fans in your house?
Apparently, yeah. Okay. It has video-on-demand, interactive applications, a whole-house DVR, a visual unique, and a guide that's intuitive. It kind of remembers what you looked for the last time. And you can program your DVR from your smartphone, your tablet, or your PC. And it, I already mentioned the wireless set-top boxes. So, it's, the next page is just really a snapshot of kind of what the guide looks like, shows you what the information looks like. It'll, it gives you a little bit more than the standard little banner that you got. So, you get the times, or the titles, and how long it goes, right on the initial guide. So, you can do channel peaks, which is enhanced browsing, and it doesn't interrupt what you're looking at. So, if you're watching one, you can do a channel peek and look at other, other channels. Unified search, so you just go in there and you type in like they're looking for Iron Man in this example, and it will search everything, your video-on-demand, your DVR, your live TV, and your other over-the-top sources. So, it does multi-devices. It shows your video library, live TV programs, and hot TV series, if you select that, that you can look at, that you subscribe to. Some of the over-the-top content is a one-stop-shopping content, so that's where you can access Netflix. And this example is channel 1423. So, you just go to your guide, you go to that channel, and you can go right to Netflix without all the load Netflix, that kind of stuff. So, really, that's a little bit about the product. It is a great product. We have great pricing on it. The best thing about this is we do no additional, we don't tear up your roads, we don't have construction equipment. The infrastructure is already in place in Monroe. All we do is add enhancements to our fiber optics and to our backbone, and we can turn it on. So, we won't be digging up roads, backyards, things like that. And either, we can feed it two ways. We have a very deep fiber-rich network, or we can also feed it over copper. We bond the copper together, and as long as we can get to a certain bandwidth, it works just fine. We have it working in a number of locations. The, you know, I think that you would find it gives your constituents an alternative at a great price, and it's a great product. We continue to improve it. We just had a, recently, last year, an upgrade. The, the technology keeps changing, and the compression has gotten even better than what it was. So, you know, the picture quality is really very, it's difficult to compare it to something else. I think you'd be really surprised with it. It also gives you franchise agreements. So, the agreement I don't do. You work with Jack Phillips. He's our attorney. He works with your attorney. It's pretty much a standard franchise agreement that New York State pretty much has a pretty heavy hand in outlining what the costs are with. I believe the mandate from the state is that we match the local competitor. So, if it's Time Warner, then we match their franchise agreement. And, like I said, it's pretty much, you know, set by the state. Another nice thing is, as people leave satellite services, on a satellite service, you don't get a franchise fee, but on Vantage TV, if they migrate to Vantage TV, it will increase your, you know, you'll also get current video customers, you'll get their franchise fees that you didn't previously get. One question I'm always asked in Monroe, and I don't know why, is, do we get the YES Network? Yes, we do. Okay? Then YES is a very popular channel around here. I knew it was going to come up, so I thought I'd take it hot on.
I don't know about YES, but I'm concerned about Channel 12, which is our local news.
Okay, it's local TV.
Channel 12.
Well, I want to go back down the street and try and see if I get Channel 12, but what I'm told is, we get all the local networks. If Channel 12 is a one-off, I don't know. Is it a pay channel? Is it a government channel? I don't, is it a pay?
It's a local news. Like, I think anywhere, like, New Orleans has a 12, and we have a 12.
I'm getting a little outside my expertise, but I will tell you, there's a DAA for TV channels, and so whatever's in the DAA that we're supposed to offer is what we offer. But I-
I know that, like, our satellites don't have Channel 12.
Okay, I live in a different location. Our ABC channel is, is, I don't know if I can watch it.
Four, two?
Eighteen, eighteen. So, yeah, and it would get eighteen. If it's an ABC, NBC, CBS channel, it should get it.
Is it a media network?
No, it's News Channel 12.
News Channel 12. Which would only work if it were on Channel 12. It would be weird if it was News Channel 12 on-
On Channel 16. I can check, and we can, we'll find the answer back to you.
Oh, we don't get it? Okay, we don't get it.
You know, I know we're supposed to get all the local channels, but-
It's personal channels.
I'm sorry.
Is it really?
Oh, then, no, we won't get it. If it's Optimum or Time Warner's channel, we will not get it. So, okay.
So, I have a question about the hardware.
Sure.
So, the set-top box and the hockey pucks, do you, do, does the subscriber own them, or are they renting them from Frontier?
I'm going to stick my neck out and say that it is part of the rental.
Okay. Now, is Frontier this, this service, is it available remotely? So, can you pull it up via, can you watch television on a laptop?
We have just lost, lost our own app. So, you know, frontier.com, but I could get the details on it for you.
But you've just launched an app?
We have an app.
So, that means that the app can be uploaded onto, like, a Roku or a Firestick or something else? Okay.
I could get you a little more detail on that, because I actually, I applied for the app, and I haven't downloaded it yet, and I haven't used it. So, I, I always like to use something before I say it.
Before you say anything about it.
Yeah, so-
But it's available?
Yes.
Okay.
I think the biggest concern for me is price. You know, we have DirecTV right now. I'm not really loving it. But what happens is, you, you know, might get locked in at a price that you think is good, and then after a certain amount of time, it goes up really high, and-
Right. If you go to frontier.com, it has all our prices for Vantage TV there. Of course, we have a promo, great promotional price, you know, base package you can get in into for about $65, I want to say, base package. Of course, whatever you add on in the premium channels, it will go up from there. It'll tell you right there how long the commitments are, and it, it kind of changes, you know, now and then. Traditionally, we don't, you, I want to say usually, lock people into a contract. The difference could be, if you got something like a gift card with it, then I, in those instances, we do sometimes have two-year agreements. But I do not believe in Vantage, but it's right on frontier.com, if you go there, that we mandate that you stay in a contract. But it will be right on our website. Or I could also send the mayor some collateral on that. But from a promotional pricing, that's a really terrific price.
Is that just on the cable though, or what about those of us that have Frontier as our internet provider and possibly phones as well? Do you have your own version of a triple play or something like that?
Yes, we have a triple play. Phone, that's just on the TV portion, where you bundle your phone, internet, and TV with it. The other thing is the, because, to make this work, we have to enhance your internet speeds, and that's what our new equipment does. So, you know, basically, you'll find that your internet experience is also much improved too.
So, I just have one concern also, and it's service. Here's the unpopular thing. It's very difficult to get someone to service from Frontier.
Okay.
What's that going to look like if I bundle my internet, my phone, and my TV, when I can't get them to come for my internet?
I will tell you, during periods of peak vacations and storms, like any communications business, you know, our intervals, I look just before I've been here, to do an installation. So, if you call this today, you would get four days from now. So, what's today, Tuesday? Wednesday, Thursday, Friday? We don't traditionally offer on Saturday unless you push us, quite frankly, and then we would be there on Saturday. I do have technicians that work on Saturday. But it could go to Monday. You can always escalate, okay, and say, no, that doesn't, and then they'll provide you a better, you know, if it's really, I gotta have this now. You know, also for TV, we normally give a better date. That's for traditional phone and all that. Part of the mentality behind that is, you know, we find that people, if your phone goes out, you can kind of live with it a little bit. Your internet goes out, you're really getting kind of cranky, because the kids are yelling. If your TV goes out, you're really going to be jumping up and down. And so, we do try to accommodate any outages with our TV. The good news is, I will tell you, there, we've had it running since last November, and there have been very, very few outages. Okay? And it's usually when the provider, you know, their channel goes out, and then you lose the channel. And we have a special dedicated group to it. It's called the FAST Group, and they are very good at working with the providers to make sure we have quick restores. So, I will, I only know of a handful of channels that we've lost.
All right. Well, before you leave, I have a favor to ask.
Sure. You have my card?
I do.
And you can always, you know, call me, text me. Email is great for me. As you might imagine, I get a lot of calls, so, like all of you. And so, I usually carry my phone with me, and I'm pretty good at responding and escalating it when I need to, so it works really great, too. Okay?
Can I just ask a quick question?
Sure.
So, I've been, you mentioned an attorney. That's not the attorney. I'm getting Peter Glennon.
Jack Phillips? Oh, Peter Glennon is our, yes. Our internal company attorney is Jack Phillips. He's the one that would be, you know, occasionally talking to the mayor, or, you know, the clerk to arrange appointments. Glennon is the foreman that we use, and Jack is like our manager. Jack is always, Mayor Dwyer, I hope you have his contact information.
I do.
So, he's a great one for, he's been doing this for a long time, so he can also further clarify.
Yeah, I just had, you know, I went back and forth a bit with, with Peter, and then I just had a couple of additional questions that I can direct.
I can help him either. Call your partner, he's about to try him, maybe I could-
No, no. It's, you know, I just wanted, you know, there's, there's a description of gross, you
know, gross revenue, and basically, it says, this is what's not included, and then there's two big paragraphs. I was just wondering if I could get a clear description of what is included in gross revenue?
Yes.
And I'm sure he can provide that.
Definitely, my attorney.
Yeah, yeah. And then, just, everything else, there was a 15-year term, and I have always recommended to my other clients, we just did a, one of my clients just signed a contract like this, and we reduced that term to 10, which was what the board was comfortable with, rather than 15. But I have not put that question to this board yet, so I'm just, kind of, that's just a heads up.
Your attorney?
Yes.
I'm sure he gets that, too.
Sure. And I'll be, I'll be emailing these to, to Peter.
Okay.
So, I'm sure he'll let him know.
Jack will, I'm sure, be talking to Peter, and I'll kind of, you know, for, give him a tip off.
And the 5% that's set by the feds?
What?
The 5% is set by the feds?
New York State, I believe. But Jack will also clarify that for you, but everything that I've heard, it's a match to your company.
Okay, and that would be-
Or not to exceed a match to your company.
Yeah, there was one other thing about, you know, if your, if the village is underpaid, I'll send that comment to him as well.
Okay.
And then, the only comment I would have the board is, what, you know, what is the percentage you're getting now? You may want to look into that, because if it's more than 3% or 5%, then you would know.
I think we're supposed to match him, not 5% to 5%. I think it's, I heard Jack say, that he is definitely-
Well, this says 5%, which is fine.
So, I'm guessing he found out what the-
5% is, is the, the most that-
It's the most I've seen when we put that on.
You know, it's, it's set by law, and-
So, on that same vein, Claudia, that's also my question. I was a little curious when you mentioned that it was set by, I guess, the Public Service Commission, is what you're thinking?
Yes.
Yeah. And-
I think the language is drawn up by them, and I really think it reads something like, "We will match the incumbent not to exceed 5%." I think it's, is what I heard Jack say, but he is really the authority.
So, he would be the authority?
Yes.
And I agree, I would agree with that. I think the other part of this picture is, you said that the network or the infrastructure is already built out.
Yes.
So, right now, what's built out in Monroe is copper.
No.
No.
That is not the case. There's a lot of fiber fed, infrastructure in Monroe.
Okay, so let-
And our office is very close here, too.
So, let's just take this building as an example. This building is copper.
Okay.
So, if we were to take advantage of this, do we have the bandwidth? Do we have the pipe size, and the copper wires coming into this building that can handle this system?
I have to look at your location specifically. You're right in the heart of town, so I'm off-the-cuff going to say yes, but we do a customized look at your service. When you say, "This building is copper," you mean in the building, but what feeds this building?
What feeds this building is copper.
It is copper. So, what we would do, if we don't have the fiber near here, is we would take that copper and bond it together.
Okay.
So, you can get terrific speeds out of bonded copper.
Which are increasing the, the pipe?
Yeah, you just, you know, bond it together. It's, it's not, it's more than twisting them together, it's a special technique.
I'm sure.
And go see a band.
And, so, you use the word Vantage, because it's on the, on the literature?
Correct.
Is that your partner in offering?
No, that's what we call our drive.
Okay, so who is your partner in this, in this model?
I guess I don't know the answer to that, other than Erickson's set-top box. You know, the platform is Erickson's Media Softroom, but it's, it's pretty much ours, right? We negotiate the agreements with the channels, like Fox, and ABC, and NBC like that. So, I think it's, it's more of a homegrown kind of thing.
Oh, really?
Well, that's my impression. We, like I said, we've, we get their software platform, which is what we use, but we put together our own channel cards.
So, going back to the-
Can I just step back on that?
Yeah, sure.
We, over the last couple of years, we've bought a lot of Verizon, former Verizon properties, and former AT&amp;T properties. So, we do business in 29 states. We've got 25,000 employees. You know, depending on what day, we can look at the internet and see what our network is. But that, because of those properties, when we bought them, we picked up Ubers and Bios properties that all we can, that agreements with, all the carriers, you know, all the channels. And so, it was pretty easy for us to step in and to say, us too. You know, so we were looking to negotiate some pretty competitive bids, because, you know, we're getting pretty decent in sizes, though.
So, going back again, so the, I call them the partner. I mean, you guys don't produce TV shows, you buy product.
No, I'm not going to be on TV. Not happening.
Right, right. So, when we talk about what you folks can offer, it's based upon what you've gotten from the marketplace that you've negotiated to acquire. And that, they'll all have terms and, and set prices and so forth. So, like, when Trustee Conklin said before about, or somebody said about YES. So, at times, whether it's Time Warner, or Cablevision, or Altice, whatever it is now, they can hold the channel hostage and take it off the air.
Just a second.
So, I'm just wondering, like, in your agreements, since you're the homegrown team, as you said, how, how will that affect our use?
Every carrier negotiates with the channels, okay? It, I think it'd be similar to Time Warner, you know, Cablevision, Dish, you know, Direct, they all can be held hostage. So, I don't think there's any difference, you know, but once again, they are trying to be a little bit better authority to get into the nitty-gritty on it. We have, let me just put it this way, since I've been around Vantage, and I've been around it for a while, because I was actually working in Connecticut for a little bit, I, we have not experienced it yet. Okay. So, it's, you know, we, of course, have a contract with them for so many years, you know, and then the year comes the fight. You know, it's really interesting, because years ago, if you remember, way back to the 90s, the channels used to pay the cable companies to carry their channels. And one day, they woke up and said, wait a minute, why are we paying you? You should pay us. You know, so, the, you know, it kind of got inverted then, and, you know, it's business.
Do you think that the, I've been told this, so I don't know this firsthand, I've just been told by somebody. Do you believe that the copper, major Verizon, AT&amp;T are not investing in copper any longer? Do you agree with that?
Personally, oh, for sure. But, I mean, Verizon for sure. Personally, I believe that. Does our company believe that? They, they could have a different opinion, but, you know, I'm responding as a citizen. I live in a Verizon territory. I don't have DSL. I don't have a cell service. Okay? So, here I am, the Director of Operations for a major telecommunications company, and it can't work from home, because they won't invest in the infrastructure. When my phone goes out, five days, that's nothing. Last time, it was two weeks. So, yes, they're not investing. And I probably, in the interest of, who's taping? I used to work for Verizon. I put in a lot of years at Verizon, and I had a pretty decently high position, and I left on one of their offers back in the early 2000s, when they were still investing in the plant. Since then, you know, so I know a lot of people there still, and I get that sense from them, too, that they're not investing. I mean, it's, it's 2018, and I don't have high speed? Really? I, I live 10 minutes from a mall. The airport is on the other side of the, the hill from me. So, it's, yes, personally, I would say, definitely not. I also did see, though, in fairness, the PSC is pressing them to, they're coming to some kind of agreement now, that they will start investing in the, fixing their infrastructure. It was worded some, some way like that. I don't know if you saw that. It was in the papers recently.
That's what prompted my question.
Right, so, oh, okay, so it could change, but I don't think they have been till this point.
And as far as technically, you know, there's been mention about some of the issues we've had with Frontier, but as a voice, you know, over your copper lines, now you're introducing a, a television, you know, where is our, where is our go-to person in, in thinking about this and discussing it? Who is our go-to person to kind of really get into the nuts and bolts of this?
Couple things. First of all, we do have a retail presence right here in town. Sid Tishon is the, somebody you've kind of, you've met him.
What's the name?
Sid.
Oh, Sid, sure.
He is the local manager for the area. So, Sid is the guy sitting right down the street here, you know, that you can always, I can provide you with his number, or you can call me or send an email.
I have his number.
I'm number two.
Speed dial.
Oh, speed dial, yeah. So, Sid's your guy. He actually has a technician that is a working foreman, too. Butch Conklin, I don't know if any of you know him?
I do.
Okay, so Sid and Butch really run that, that group, and they're both very dedicated. Sid was going to be here tonight, but he's a foreman. He usually does these with me a little bit. You got the manager trouble, I think, but he has some, on his computer.
So, our go-to person to understand more technically about this product would be Sid?
Yes.
Okay.
Sid certainly could ask some, you know, answer some. He supervises the technicians and has to go out and help them, and he's actually gone to the school on it, so.
Did Butch go to school?
I think so. I, I'm like 99% sure that he did, but don't quote me on that. You could ask him.
Jack and Peter are going to be our go-to for the council.
Yes. Jack is our attorney, and he works with the Glennon group.
Okay. And I think I'm good for now. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Anybody else, Carrie?
Yeah.
Anybody from the public have any comments, questions for Claudia?
Hello, everybody. I mean, oh, Miami.
It's, uh, nice to see you all tonight. Nice and cool in there by the way, Mayor. Yeah, I have some questions. I actually used to use, um, Frontier at my property out in, outside, in town in Monroe, not in the Village of Monroe. And one of the things you've got to answer, first of all, answer your question, Mayor, there is a possibility, 'cause I've dealt with it a lot, a lot of the buildings I have, as you know, and they can bring copper, uh, fiber optic lines up to your building, and then they convert, there's a converter to, to copper lines. So, that can be done. I've seen that done. I've had a problem with the copper lines, and my advice, if you give them the right, I would suggest that you require them to remove all copper lines. I've removed them from my building, uh, in the village and outside the village, because they're not a very, very unreliable system. Inside the building, it's not so bad, but when you deal with weather lines and all that other stuff, it's an issue, I would do. And when she speaks about, and I, no offense, I'm just trying to raise some thoughts here. Uh, when you, when you speak about the, um, amount of copper lines to fiber optic lines, I think they can provide you with some measurement of how much is still copper and how much is, is been converted to fiber optic lines. Huh?
Network wise.
Network, yeah. Yeah, usually the most familiar term is fiber optics to most people nowadays. And I think you shouldn't make service commitment, 'cause they, I mean, they are a small firm, but they've been around a long time in the community. I know they got the old building there and stuff. I don't know what their speeds are, matching what there is out there already versus what they're gonna, what they're charging or what they may charge the community for their internet speeds and stuff. I think you need to take a good, close look at that and, and see, because, uh, answer is no. News twelve does not come with it. But then, you know, but then Verizon has their own news. I think it's News One or something like that. They all have their different news channels, and Frontier may have their own, too. I'm not aware. Oh, you don't, okay. But, uh, I know the common ones like Fox News and CNN, they typically go out to all the cable companies with services. But you may wanna check into that, because what's the cost gonna be for Frontier if you decide to say, hey, listen, sixty percent of your system is copper and forty percent is fiber, and it's not probably gonna work. It's gonna cause a lot of service issues. What's it gonna cost them to, to upgrade the, the, the infrastructure for their service? You need to think about that, 'cause, you know, technology is an every, everyday occurrence thing, and things are changing, and, Mayor, you know that better than anybody, with, you know, being the building business and stuff. So, those are the, some of the concerns that I just thought off the top of my head. I've seen no brochures. I've seen nothing beyond that. I personally did use the Frontier line when I, when I came up here. It was, it was all right, but when it went down, it went down. And then you had to wait several days for service, and, you know, when you're in a storm or something happening of significance in the community and you can't get in connection, and when you're on the outside of town, you know, it's a problem. But, um, I support, like, I'm sure everyone else does, choice, you know, variety in the community, which is a good idea, which is- So, those, again, that's the only ideas I came up about that I'm sure she could address and let the board know, but I think it's really important, if you're gonna give us residents options to make sure the option is equivalent to what's already here, infrastructure-wise. So, I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Andy?
I've been in cable for over forty years, so I could probably tell you a lot, but if you want more information, I can tell you. What she's offering is the new Altice system that they're offering. Copper will never, ever keep up with fiber, no matter how you bond it, so.
Can I just come along? Um, yes, you're right. Copper forty meg is about what you're gonna get out of copper. Fiber weeds sell, you know, hundred and twenty, right? The product works.
Also, on as far as programming, you don't have the volume power or compact stuff.
Of course, of course, but we do not have an insignificant amount of volume power either. Remember, we have California and Texas, which are pretty big, right, and Florida. But, um, regarding volume power and all that stuff, we've actually trialed this as far as we can get it, and we know where it'll work and where it won't work, and we don't sell it. Okay, so you're right. Of course, copper is different than fiber, but you can get forty meg out of it. Also, the new set-top boxes, part of that new compression allows them to work much better, um, with less bandwidth. So, this stuff is changing with the speed of life.
Oh, absolutely, I mean, it is.
The last thing we want is to have a dis-satisfying TV customer, because that would spread like wildfire. And so far, we've installed over two hundred of them throughout the years, so, and we, I've got no complaints. That I've heard.
Thank you.
I think I would hear that, because I do repair. Um, and could I just go back to the other gentleman's? The likelihood that we would wholesale replace an entire market area, you know, the infrastructure, that would be very slim, I would think. But I think there is more fiber here than you realize, okay? And, and like I said, we have it, uh, working out on copper, definitely, and the customers are very pleased. It won't be fiber, but it still works very well, and, you know, I don't know you, but we'd be happy to demo it for you. And try it, put it up. If you don't like it, we'll take it out. Our pricing, I think you'll find, very competitive, because if it wasn't, we wouldn't last, so I think you'll also be pleased with that.
I just, I'm just, I mean, I'm lost in the fiber optic and copper thing, so if fiber optic is obviously like the thing, why wouldn't everybody just use it, or is it something that you can't, everybody can't use?
Well, it, it, great for me. It's expensive to replace.
Okay.
It's also in a lot of cases in the ground, so it's really expensive to replace, right? And it still works. It works fine. It's on to maintain it correctly. You could talk on a copper connection and a fiber connection, and you probably wouldn't be able to tell the difference.
So, the odds-
Unless it was poof, and then it would be worse.
So, the odds are I probably have copper, right? I mean-
I don't really, I, I couldn't answer that.
I'm gonna say that I am, because I don't think I've ever heard the word fiber optic on my street, ever. So, it comes down to price. That's what it sounds like to me.
Well-
I mean, if it's competitive, that's great.
Right. It's competitive, and it's got, the, the pitch quality, we, we believe is superior. And the instant channel change that features in the product, you know, six, you can look at six things at the same time, you can take six things at the same time. They're all really feature enhancements that our cable friends do not.
Anybody else? John, please.
It's okay, I'm talking back here, because everybody's at the mic. You can't hear, you can't hear what's going on.
Oh, really?
Yeah, it's six, three, two, six.
Oh, maybe we should put it in the back.
No, that's why I'm writing, that's where you're talking speed, so. I'm all about competition. The only way you're gonna drive prices down is to allow others in. And if they come in with a shoddy product, they're not gonna last long.
That's right.
So, if they wanna come in, you know, sit, sit with them, see what they, what they offer, if they, if you're gonna bring, you know, an electrical engineer or gentleman over here to, to help, but cable, what you, cable is, is, is crazy. You know, went up two hundred, and I'm like, two hundred and twenty dollars, I got another phone, one of them, I got it lowered for another year, but it's just gonna be the same thing again.
It's me, it's so funny.
Again, I think competition is the only way you're gonna, the only way you're gonna, you're gonna drive it down. Like I say, if Frontier doesn't come in and set their, their network up, and it doesn't work, they're not gonna be here anymore. And everybody will back to cable, or be on a cable jack of a price. You know?
Yep.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Have to see the competition.
Sure, absolutely agree. Anybody else? Yes, please.
How does that affect them in municipal channels?
Uh, it's probably gonna affect them, because I believe Channel twenty-two-
Not, it won't be on theirs.
As I'm saying, it won't be, yeah.
Well, there's something, gotta try to-
Twenty-one might be Altice, which is that community channel, will not be-
If you have peg channels, we, they are mandated-
What did you call it? I'm sorry, Claudia.
Peg channels.
Peg?
Peg.
PG?
Yes. If you have a peg channel, we are mandated to carry it. And that's a, like, um, community bond boards and, and schools, things like that.
Well, we do have, we actually have a, uh, a community channel, which does have the peg board, but it also serves as a community tool to broadcast meeting. Okay. Okay, great.
If you have a cell phone, you can, where they have that thing.
Sure. Anybody else? Yes, please.
I'll push back here, because I'm really upset that John's in here, and I said, like, you're gonna be, I don't mind not making-
He's gonna get the transcript, don't worry about it.
All right. No, um, but, but you can, you can check with the cable companies, but I, I'm looking at you with copper.
I think I am.
They, they not have a fiber one, but they are telling us a black cord that comes in and does, check with them to see how much-
But if I have copper, I have copper no matter who I have, it sounds like.
Well, you're gonna play, when you start to compare, make sure you're carrying the same services.
That's all I'm asking, that's not true. Let me just explain it very quickly. She didn't, she didn't explain in copper, where's it coming from, how far. Local, currently, fibers run up to a node that receives fiber, and then you have the tops, two amplifiers of copper to your house. So, it can carry a lot of information. When she says she's bonding copper, that's a whole different story. It's not the same thing. It's not coax, it's bonding a bunch of copper twisted pairs together to get to a higher speed level. We don't know the distances that they have to travel or any of that, so, yes, you have copper. Everybody has copper coming into the house for a, for a short distance. But that's about it, just a short distance. So, the only thing is correct. You know, yeah, competition is the best. FiOS, if you brought FiOS in here, Optimum would give you anything you want, because FiOS, as FiOS is eating their lunch in one hour, has been three years. So, that would be great. Competition, that would be fantastic. But, uh, that's, you know, if you want technical information, I've got a lot of that.
I heard that about you.
Really, your transcript, so you have an office over here in Long Island. Your service leaves that office, which is very close, either on a copper tier or a fiber tier, one of two ways. It'll go out to a node in the neighborhood, okay? And that node provides your service, okay? What we do is if it's fiber, we'll run a fiber drop, okay? If it's copper, we'll continue with the copper. But when we bond it, it will act very similar, not exactly, to, to, um, fiber. I dare say, I don't know how you would tell the difference, okay? If, as long as we have this speed there, the compression set-top box is gonna take care of it as long as it's a standard to provide the service.
Okay.
Is that a fair statement?
Well, again, you said forty meg would be the top. Right now, almost everybody here has two hundred meg as the best option. If you have four, five-
Have you ever exhausted?
Well, if you have four, five, six, anybody who have a lot of children, you're using your iPads to look at TV, all of that, that would slow forty meg in no time.
But you're not using two hundred.
No, lovely, no, but they're probably easily using four to finish.
But I would tell you, if you got this product, working with four, five, six, I don't know about six.
Well, that's stuff that we have to figure out. That's what has to be done.
We have it today, working, we have it today, working on some old TVs, you know, we have my old TVs that are, so, it, it does work. I don't know yet, so, I have to see it.
Well, listen, I, I think at the end of the day, if it's true, if it's a true statement, I would suggest that competition is, is the driver. So, um, there are, there are many questions, both in terms of product, uh, offering, uh, legal issues. Uh, there's, there's more diligence here to be done, and I would, I would just say that that's probably where we're at right now. And I thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Anytime. Do you have my contacts? Do you have any more questions?
Yes.
Don't give it to him, I'll take it.
I'm kidding. I think he's already got it.
Was there anybody else, uh, that's, okay? So, I think at that point, uh, I think I'm going to make a, ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Okay, call the question.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so Carrie. We're going to take a five-minute recess.
I'm gonna grab you.
And we're gonna be in the meeting. Thank you so much so far. Sure.
No? Yeah, like it shuts. The bathroom door? Yeah, it's not open. Since when? I just tried to lock it.
I think you'll find, you'll-
Somebody, she thought somebody fell, it was took it by accident.
Or install.
That's how it goes, it's not, it's not.
Did you notice the bathroom door is?
Well, the five percent is one thing on basis. But what about data customers? What about telephone customers? You might wanna think about that. Also, we- Throw that into the mix.
Yeah, I have a note on that.
An old minor studio here. We used to deliver, we, we owned mobile trucks for franchising, when I used to franchise in cable.
That's a good point. Yep. That's how we got that. That's how we got that. Of course, we put it in the closet. That's how we got it.
So, what's it, free service to government and public buildings is what we're talking about?
Uh, we're talking about, uh-
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Technology that they can offer us, and like, here you go, thank you so much for the information. Like that camera.
Well, you want, you want them to supply, and we give you a list of what, this is what we want. We want cameras, we want video recording included. Also, you- Free service is not enough. You wanna tie in all of your buildings.
What do you mean, you wanna be in?
Also want the schools all tied in.
But the current provider is not providing that.
Right, so let them do it. As part of the franchise.
If you could jot a few notes down or send, uh, uh, Neil an email to that effect, all included in the negotiations, yeah, that'd be great.
I mean, I used to go out franchising at the time with, uh, Group W Cables, when I was- They would ask for the sky, and most of the time get it.
Give him a shopping list. We can ask, yeah. But, I think that is still there, so, if you need to park it, you'll have to have the lock changed and attached. And we have a spare key if you get locked in there. Sorry, Carrie.
She says it doesn't have any, uh, any financial stuff on it. So, I said, I'm gonna give her his name, she can call him tomorrow. I said, but for me, Wes, well, they didn't even make an effort. Um, it's, now it's- Listen to me. I said that when I first got on, how slow shit goes there. I'm never in my life, when I first became a trustee, I'm not kidding you, there were so many things I wanted done. And Jim literally sat there and said, welcome to Memphis. You guys said, I don't understand what that means, because nothing happens in our town. The government is extremely slow. And I didn't realize it until I tried to get back to him. It's looking forever, forever, for the stupidest things. I mean, I can't, you know. Yep. Robert, all right. I wonder if I could call him.
She stood guard. It's like you're back in college.
Kinda like jigging.
Yeah. Jiggle it too much? I don't believe I'm yawning.
Call the board for anything.
With, um, uh, what was the stuff here? Is there anything that, uh, we need to do this week?
Well, I'm gonna talk to the board, and we're gonna discuss, um, authorizing the mayor to go forward.
Hi, Robert Tyrencuk, calling back from the Village of Monroe. Um, I don't know if you checked your voicemail after hours, but, um, our treasurer wanted to know if you had finance-
But it all depends on whether they-
Uh, the village, multifamily housing, um, and it's, she said it's municipal codes, but is it village? I know that we had talked to him, he said it's all New York State. I just wanted to make sure, but she's probably going to call you tomorrow, her name is Catherine Murray, to get the rest of the information, all right? Thanks.
I think the, the, personally, I think the board needs to- I would think that this would be it. I don't know any, but it says, you know, municipal. They're pointless if you give the board some information. No, she asked him out there. That I add that to wherever it needs to be before.
Was that the village?
Oh, yeah. It would be, it'd be town, village, all the, all the New York State laws.
What about finance? I, I mean, I don't see anything in here for this, and this is what Catherine's thinking. So I know it's finance.
Like the local finance law? That would be in the New York State code.
So it would be here? Okay. And what about multifamily housing?
That would be in New York State code. Yes, now, the question would be, um, I mean, the building inspector, they have access to the actual-
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But in terms of multifamily law, for the laws, so, I would use this. I use this all the time, but then I also-
I know, that's why I tried to call him now.
Okay, you, you, you have a presence, no, Mike, be quiet.
It's a super great price. So we found out-
I gave it up.
Adding increase, plus he's giving them a license for users. I mean, it's really a big deal. And, uh-
I'm watching TV a long time ago, and we-
Whatever else we need.
So you're getting cases.
I don't know how much part do I-
All over, because he says, may I?
Um, I would give it, so, uh, so it's, you know, it's since a group of, uh, village of Monroe, that he would amend, say, uh-
If it's all right here, the New York consolidated laws, that is, it's town, village, general municipal law, local finance law, executive law, public officers' law, civil service law, it's, it's all in, it's all in there, and then-
Okay, I don't, I don't get that.
The municipal codes, I mean, you kind of get that on the E code. So I don't know what, actually, I'm not sure what that means, but, um-
Um, doesn't have to be state-
Okay, so this-
I got something that you want.
Okay.
But as long as village, village law would be here.
Okay.
Town law, state law.
It's all under the consolidated laws?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
But now, she's got a very specific question.
I would be there, just the-
Using something that-
All of the trusties. What that would be. All she said was finance.
Even though motion hasn't been made, the locals have asked. There's the village, um-
Boy, let me just close that.
Yeah. I would imagine that they would be able to address any of it, right? They would have it, it would be here. If Westlaw has it, why wouldn't they?
Excuse me one second, I just have a question.
Yes.
I just want to check, yeah, the order here. So this is actually a, uh-
To the, to the-
I think we looked at this, right?
To the, to the cable and the attendance.
I did, since a period of years.
I'm asking that, over here, there's a motion, so, we, now, it's, uh, the, the, the motion, that's what I'm asking.
You can't just, it's kind of like a little bio is doing.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah. It, it, I mean, you would say like, you know, in the form of a resolution, it would be whereas, the event application, blah, 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 blah.
It's not the middle of it, and then, you know.
Yeah, I mean, this is fine. I, I thought it was fine, so-
Yeah, no, no, I'm with you, I'm just saying that, if Stewart says, is estimated to be processing five hundred and eighty pounds.
Yeah.
On a motion by, so, someone's, I mean, she's actually gonna make a motion, she's gonna ask for second. So I'm asking, is it that?
Motion.
That's just, that's a conversation-
Yeah, there's a couple ways you could say, on a motion by, uh, seconded by, resolved, et cetera, and then you do your vote.
Can I make a suggestion, too? It's similar, you used to do it with, as trustees and the police department, when you had a memo, you'd say, on a memo by, blah, 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 and then explain it, so Carrie could say, um-
Pause right there.
Exactly, blah, 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 and then I'd like to put that in front of the motion. Someone will make the motion, someone will second it. Isn't that how you normally do it?
Yes, no, but I saw the second paragraph, I thought maybe it's one, two, no, and, so this here is good, and I, I-
Yeah, okay.
Oh, you're kidding, where? Oh, no. Well, since, do you, do you personally like to get copies of all of the paperwork that I sent?
So they won't be here tonight.
Oh, Kathy, you can have that pass. And then-
Let me mail everything to general code, so I can copy you on it.
Yes, that would be great.
That's perfect, 'cause Scott, the reason why is that Scott wanted nothing.
Oh, how's he doing?
He sent something to you.
I keep everything.
You get nothing, in the beginning, so, this is why I want to know what you want, what you don't want.
Yeah, if I'm getting too much, I'll let you know, but, but that way I can just look in my-
For the swaps, he stole mine. He got everything from eight or ten.
I thought it was a lawful law.
So sorry.
Good, yeah, good.
And get Neil, take some bad spots.
Good, good, uh, he's gonna have-
I can look it up, and I can-
Look at this. It's encroaching on my area. This is what I have.
How much better tonight?
Look at my, this is what I have.
How much better?
Right, right. Take it, don't take it, I agree.
So she, she here.
Does she need anything?
What are we doing?
I'm in.
Okay.
No, I know.
Yep. Look at yours, it's a, man.
Okay, I'd like to call this, uh, meeting to order. Uh, this is the Tuesday, July twenty-fourth, two thousand eighteen meeting, here in the boardroom at, uh, Village Hall, Seventh Stage Road, Monroe, New York. Once again, the exits, front and rear. Uh, if I could ask everyone to stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for being here this evening. Uh, first order of business is the department reports. Have the trustees had an opportunity to read through the reports?
Yes.
Any questions?
I do.
Please.
On the water report, I see that the reservoir says minus four, and I'm wondering what that means.
Ernie's not here. He's, uh, at a water main break.
I heard.
Mm-hmm. Pretty big one.
Water elevation, oh, it's four feet or four inches down.
It doesn't specify the unit of measure, it just says minus four, but I'm wondering if that is an indication that we are below where we should be, by a certain number of increments, and if that's the case, do we need to, I mean, is that natural? You know, is it that, we haven't gotten enough rain, which I find to be, um, unlikely.
Probably pushing up for it now.
Okay, so we need to, uh, query Ernie about it?
Yes.
I don't think it's four feet, I'm-
No, I wouldn't think that it was four feet.
I, I could tell you it's probably a foot, um, maybe a little bit more, but definitely not four feet.
Okay.
I'm gonna say that he, I, I mean, I spoke to him about, uh, the way the reservoir looks a couple of times, and he, he said it was down a couple inches. I'm, I'm gonna go with, he's thinking four inches, but he's not here, so.
Okay. So we'll get some clarity and, and get back with the board on that, and the public as well. Okay, any further questions? Concerns? Okay, call the question.
Aye.
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 Oh, no, we didn't make that, I'm sorry.
I will make the motion to-
Second?
I'll second it. Sorry about that.
Call the question?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, again.
Aye.
Aye, so Carrie, thank you. Okay, budget transfers, have the trustees had an opportunity to look at the transfers for the month?
Yes.
Any questions? Okay, I need someone to make a motion.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Call the question?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All right, so Carrie, thank you. No. Okay. Uh, this is, uh, Village Hall Equipment Surplus Disposal of Electronic Equipment. Resolved, the Board of Trustees declared the following Village Hall Electronic Equipment Surplus and of no value and authorized its removal from inventory and disposal as junk. Brothers printer HL six one eight zero DW, serial number V as in Victor, six three zero eight, two E as in Francis, three N as in Nancy, four zero six seven one five. I need someone to make a motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Questions? Call the question?
Aye.
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 Aye, so Carrie. Okay. Next order of business is Local Law Six of two thousand eighteen, amending chapter one eighty-five of the Village Code of Towing.
Neil, me. Oh.
Okay.
Sorry, if you want me to-
Please.
So I reach out, I reached out to Westlaw and Lexus Nexus, as requested by the board, to get, um, prices. I spoke briefly with Westlaw, who had quoted us at a hundred and fifty dollars a month with a five percent increase annually. Um, after speaking with her, it was my understanding that the reason we were getting the, uh, increase of five percent annually was because we didn't have a contract, and we rolled over to a monthly account. She assured me that she would send me, after speaking with her superiors, and convincing them to reinstate a contract, that she could get me a better price, and she would email me immediately. That was at noon, I have not heard from her since. However, spoke with this lovely man, Robert Prye, from Lexus Nexus, who, in my opinion, hit this out of the ballpark, seventy-five dollars a month, but we have to lock in for thirty-six months. There is no, um, percentage increase. He's offering training, tech support, twenty-four hour, um, research assistance line, one license for users. And we have every New York State law one could want. So I'm, I'm just making the suggestion that we, we consider Lexus Nexus.
Catherine, have you had an opportunity to look at this?
Uh, yeah, like fifteen minutes ago. Um, I'll, we'll get the contract, maybe put it on each other the next time, for next meeting.
Are you using anything now, though, Catherine?
Um, just the Westlaw.
You still have access to it?
Yeah, it's just that it's off the contract, the thirty-six months expired.
Okay.
It was my understanding, it wasn't just the five percent, it was, they had increased our rate by forty percent, and then it was five-
Correct, yes. You're right, Carrie, I'm sorry. Right, it was one, I think, one oh eight originally, and we went to one, one fifty, yeah.
Can we, now, how long do you have access to Westlaw?
I have access to it now, now, my own rate.
So, so we've paid a monthly rate of a hundred and fifty dollars presumably, correct, for the month of July?
We're adding one more value to what we currently have, so I've paid like a hundred and thirty-one dollars now, around, something like that.
Okay. And that, that monthly rate that you're paying will cover you until, do you know when that will expire?
Uh, a month-
It's monthly. It's monthly.
Right, so, but now that, that ends on the thirty-first of July, or?
No, my contract that ended May.
But this, this month that you've paid for ends July thirty-first?
It's just, it's only on May.
So they'll bill you again August first?
Yeah.
Okay.
Catherine, do you have any experience with using Lexus Nexus, or any opposition to the board for any reason?
Uh, I've got a contract that I have tomorrow, and, um, I'm not-
Right, so just, just to add another little bit to this, um, he off, he offered also, this would be effective August third, but he also offered a month free, um, and they're like every other company where they bill you in the, in the rear, so you're not gonna get a bill until November. So, again, it's-
Yeah, I would trade.
Okay, so, the board wishes to, uh, give Catherine an opportunity, and I suppose Jim used this as well, yes?
Yep.
Okay, so-
We're using, so I'm home with Catherine, give us the month, we'll check it out.
Okay, good. All right, so we'll do that, and then we'll revisit this, is that what we're gonna do?
That sounds fine to me.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. So, uh, in terms of, uh, any action?
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
So you access Westlaw for the uniform code, or?
No, local village law and mul, and multiple residence law.
And when you say local village law-
The two, the two, the seven hundred, seven twelve code.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, and multifamily, okay. That's, that's in-
That's in here.
Consolidated law service.
Right.
Should be.
Okay.
And so when you say local finance law, New York State local finance law?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's also in there. Yeah.
All right, so we're gonna take the opportunity, figure it out, make sure everything is, is up to snuff, and, and then we can move forward for the next meeting, hopefully. All right? Okay, awesome. Okay. Okay, next order of business, Local Law Number Six of two thousand eighteen, amending chapter one eighty-five of the Village Code Towing. Whereas an introductory local law titled Amendment to Chapter One Eighty-Five of the Village Code Towing was introduced before the Board of Trustees of the Village of Monroe on November fourteen, two thousand seventeen, and whereas, upon notice duly published and posted, a hearing was held on said local law on November twenty-first, two thousand seventeen, whereat public discussion was heard concerning the merits of said local law, and after hearing from all those present wishing to speak and acknowledging that no written comments had been received, the Board of Trustees declared the public hearing closed, and whereas the Board of Trustees determined that this was a type-two action pursuant to the regulations implementing the State Environmental Quality Review Act, known as SEACRA, requiring no further SEACRA action. Now therefore be it resolved that the introductory local law titled Amendment to Chapter One Eighty-Five of the Village Code Towing of the Village Monroe be and hereby adopted on July twenty-fourth, two thousand eighteen, as Local Law Number Six of two thousand eighteen of the Village of Monroe. I need someone to make a motion.
I'll make the motion.
I need a second?
I'll second.
Any questions? Call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
I'm standing.
Aye. So Carrie. Okay. Secondly-
Oh, I'm sorry. What do we do?
Right here.
Oh. I didn't know there was a part two.
Okay. Okay, uh, the second part of this is the adoption of the towing rates and fees. Whereas an introductory local law titled Amendment to Chapter One Eighty-Five of the Whereas an introductory local law titled Amendment to Chapter one eighty-five of the Village Code Towing was duly enacted by the Village of Monroe Board of Trustees on July twenty-fourth, two thousand eighteen. And whereas said, said local law set forth a schedule of maximum rates and fees that could be charged by towing companies operating in the Village of Monroe pursuant to a license issued by the Chief of Police. And whereas a subsequent version of the local law removed the aforementioned rates and fees and made them subject to adoption by resolution of the Village Board of Trustees. And whereas the proposed rates and fees which are the subject of this resolution are identical to the rates and fees set forth in the local law that was subject to the duly noticed and convened public hearing. And whereas the Board of Trustees determined that this was a type-two action pursuant to the regulations implementing the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECA, requiring no further SECA action. Now therefore be resolved that the Village of Monroe Towing Fee Schedule two thousand eighteen attached here too and made a part of this resolution be hearily adopt, be hereby adopted. I need a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I need a second.
I'll second.
Any further questions, discussion?
The, um, the rates, they are, they were based on an average of industry standard, or?
Yes.
Yeah, Chief had answered this a couple times, he said they're in line with the municipality.
Yes, there's a list of rates that we have here to schedule. Okay.
And just as a, um, as a reference, um, in processing and figuring out some of this, um, the average increase was from twenty-two percent to thirty-seven percent increase in the rates in the form of, uh, uh, local law that we had or the, the coordinates, so.
Has it been established who'd be enforcing the fees? Have we established that?
Enforcing the fees?
Yeah.
As far as, you mean like the, uh, uh, if, if they're complying?
Right.
At their conscience. Unless we get a, we get a written complaint, someone comes in and says, hey, I've got a problem, and we discover the problem, we ask the chief or whoever to go out and investigate it, and then we'll take it from there. There are, there are pieces in the law that discuss issues that do come up and, and how they'll be dealt. And, um, I'm sure the board would agree that, uh, they'll be dealt with. So, um, you know, it was asked, that question was asked to me the last time by somebody, I don't remember, was it you maybe? I don't know who it was.
Oh, yes it was.
It was you, right, yeah.
It was my guess.
And, uh, listen, you either go back to the Wild West or you have some semblance of order. And you have certain rules and regulations and you have a orderly village and everybody recognizes all the pieces of that. And, uh, you hope that everybody complies and does what they're supposed to do and everybody gets, uh, gets along in that matter. But there are, there are pieces of the law that do suggest, uh, should there be any type of grievance, what the process is to deal with it, so.
And of course, uh, you know, I'm sure that the chief will be providing the report every once in a while to say, for this towing, you know, I'm getting complaints about this particular company more so than others, and then you can review whether or not to terminate their lessons, so it's another way to enforce. But again, it's, it's likely people are gonna complain or they're not, you know.
Right. Oh. Well, I could go with, yeah, I'll. Okay, so, um, we had Debbie, you made the motion. Dory, you seconded?
Yep.
All right, so, uh, any further questions, comments? Okay, uh, call the question?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm staying.
Aye, okay, four to one, thank you as well. Okay, uh, there's a request for a penalty refund. I believe that would be, um, a tax penalty. Okay, I'll read that. In a letter to the board, the property owner of five four eight Route seventeen M has requested a refund of three hundred and thirty-four dollars and forty cents for the July tax penalty that was assessed to their two properties when their two thousand eighteen Village June tax bill were paid late. The property owner claims that the bills were mailed to an incorrect address resulting in them paying them late. The address listed on the tax bill was the last one provided to the Town of Monroe Tax Assessor's Office, but according to the property owner, it was incorrect. Five forty-eight Route seventeen M, L L S.
LLC.
Uh, has owned this property since two thousand eleven and according to our tax records, has had three different billing addresses since then. According to the New York State Department of Taxation and Finance Real Property Law, it is the duty of the property owner to pay their taxes on time. So, um.
So I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
So this particular property owner has had three different billing addresses.
That's correct.
And they're noted here.
Yep.
And within the last year, because we have a tax bill that was sent to the correct address that corresponds, I believe, with the property, correct? And they received that bill. Somewhere.
I'm sorry, but if you look at this year's tax bill, two thousand eighteen.
This year's tax bill is to a different.
You will see that it is, it goes to that address, Route fifty-nine in Spring Valley. So what I imagine has happened is since last year's tax bill and this year's tax bill, the LLC has changed over. They decided to change where the information gets sent. And whether they did or did not notify the assessor's office of that address change resulted in the tax bills being sent to the last address they had on file.
So my, my question is, there is an address change, right, from last?
So, yes.
Based on the dates of these bills, there's an address, there's a different address from two, twenty seventeen to twenty eighteen. So obviously the new address was put into the computer, it was put into the system, whether it was on request of the property owner?
There's no way of knowing if.
Is there a form that they fill out, a change of address form?
We would have to, we would have to inquire with the assessor's office. We do not maintain that information. Since we do not have our own assessing department, we rely on adopting the town's tax rule.
Right.
Because of that, it is Abel McDonald's responsivile, well, I shouldn't say it that way. Abel McDonald is the person who provides that information to the Office of Real Property in Goshen, who is the body that generates our tax bills.
And sends them out from Goshen?
No, I pick them up in Goshen, bring them back here to the village.
And you send them out?
And I mail them out.
Okay.
So what I imagine happened is the LLC changed hands in the course of a year and they changed the address. They could have very well changed it at the assessor's office. The woman that I spoke to indicated that this is the address that it's always been, so she doesn't understand why these bills did not get to them. We don't have a way of verifying. If they did in fact submit an address change to the Town of Monroe Assessor's Office and it happened within the last six to eight months prior to these bills being generated, the county is that far behind on updating their records up there. So there is a slim possibility, but at the end of the day, this business, these owners have owned this business since two thousand eleven. So knowing that they're getting a tax bill from the Village of Monroe in June should not be a surprise, so when they did not get their tax bill by June first.
They should have questioned it.
They should have contacted someone and inquired about it and not waited until the bill somehow got to them to be paid.
Okay.
So the little window, it says five forty-eight Route seventeen M LLC, and then underneath it, it says two ninety-five Route fifty-nine Spring Valley, is?
Five forty-eight Route seventeen M LLC is the name of the owner, which also happens to be the address of the business.
Right, which is why I can understand the confusion. I mean, I, I did a stint with the, with the United States Postal Service and I can see where that went awry.
Regardless of where the bill was sent, it's, it's your duty as a, as homeowner and property owner.
To pay your taxes, agreed.
And also importantly to notice that it is against the law to refund the tax counting.
And if you take a look, just. Thank you for that, Trustee Conklin. If you take a look at this year's tax bill compared to last year's tax bill, it's different for the name. So the name on this year's tax bill is five forty-eight Route seventeen M LLC, which is an address.
Correct.
And then last year, it's just Route seventeen M LLC, so, yeah. This is a.
There's a five four eight.
Okay.
It's user ID, pay your taxes.
Any further?
Yeah.
Nope.
Okay. So, um,
I don't know.
We need to, uh, make a motion to, um, either accept or deny rather the request of the owner of five forty-eight Route seventeen M for his credited tax penalties totaling three hundred and thirty-four dollars and forty cents on their June two thousand eighteen tax bill.
So I'll make the motion that we deny the request for a refund on the tax penalty.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Call the question?
Aye.
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 Aye, so Carrie, thank you.
Okay, uh, next order of business is the resignation of Lily Ann Padilla Soto, a part-time dispatcher, Trustee Bull.
Yes, so in a memo from Chief Conklin, um, Lily Ann Padilla Soto has resigned from her position effective immediately as a part-time dispatcher with the, oh, with the Monroe Police Department. Um, I'd like to make a motion that we accept her resignation.
Second it.
Further question? Call the question?
Aye.
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 Aye, so Carrie, thank you.
Next order of business is the, um, release of a maintenance bond. Resolved that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of Village Engineer John O'Rourke, P E of Langton Tully, and Building Inspector James Cox, uh, and release the monies related to the one-year maintenance bond for Hidden Creek. Uh, field inspection has been conducted and as well as reviewed internal files and found nothing outstanding since the last inspection. I need someone to make the motion.
I'll make the motion that we release the bond.
I'll second.
Any questions? Okay, call the question?
Aye.
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 Aye, so Carrie, thank you.
Okay, uh, next order of business is the Hudson Valley Water Works Lab Course. Trustee Conklin? This is, uh.
Um, er, from Ernie Maybe, a memo, uh, Tuesday, August twenty-eighth, twenty eighteen, Hudson Valley Water Works Lab Course will be hosting a training seminar on the Grade A compliant lab course from eight-thirty to three. The training is scheduled to take place in the Town of Walk Hill. And he's requesting that Mike Hipsman attend, and the cost is seventy-five dollars, which includes breakfast and a lunch. The attendee will, attendee will be driving his own personal vehicle and will voucher, uh, for submitted mileage reimbursement at fifty-four cents a mile. And it will be coming out of line F eight three three zero point four seven two purification education budget line. And I'll put that in the form of a motion.
Second?
Hold on, can we just establish, um, did we not, we were talking about using personal vehicles, were we not, uh, we're trying to get away from, I don't know, personal vehicle?
We are, but I don't know that we actually took an action on it.
Yeah, I, I knew there were issues and we realized, uh, one of the major ones was the, um, personal use of the vehicle, should they incur or get into an accident, what was involved in that ended it. But the board would have to, uh, make a decision on personal use or not.
Do we have a vehicle available?
Uh, they could take something out of the, out of their, their fleet, if you will, to do as a pickup.
Only because this keeps coming up, it seems like in every situation, we keep, we keep going back to, you know, is it, are we using personal vehicles or are we using other vehicles?
Yeah. Right.
Although I'm not agreeing either way, I think it's something that we have to, a, and I may be wrong, just, it's been precedent-setting for many years that they use their own vehicle, it's, is this something that we need to?
There should be a policy, there should be a policy about the Board not to use personal vehicles. Now, you can adopt that policy now. And, you know, as a, as a matter of, um, exuberancy, if you wanna do that, I mean, it's pretty straightforward. You know, if at all possible, the Village Board doesn't want personal, you know, vehicles used.
Should we? We have to make sure there's a vehicle available for anybody.
And if there, yeah, I mean, uh, you know.
Then shouldn't we just check their, uh, collective bargaining agreement to make sure there's nothing in there? And I don't know that there may be.
Well, I think you can include in the policy that, um, you know, subject to any, uh, uh, prohibitions of this, you collect, subject to any terms of the collective bargaining agreement. So, in this case, you could set that policy very generally right now.
Okay.
You could direct either the village clerk or you or me to write it up and include it in the handbook if there isn't anything in the handbook.
There is no.
Okay, and then, um, go ahead and act on this, on this motion so you can get it done tonight.
Okay.
Rather than waiting another.
What about those of us in Village Hall, however?
Well, I think the key is whenever possible. So, for instance, when we send somebody from the building department or when we send somebody from the water department or from the highway department, that, where they have vehicles, that we ensure through the village's automobile insurance that they would take one of those insured vehicles. And that whenever there is something that involves Village Hall where we do not have a vehicle, that, then we would have to take our own car, right? Am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah, I think that's it, so really it's what you just said, which is perfect. And then, subject to collective bargaining agreement, any provisions there, and subject to actually having a vehicle, you know, a village vehicle available. Whether it just, they have them, but they're, none of them are available now, so. So it'd be like, and then, and only then can you use your own vehicle.
Right.
Okay.
If you take our own vehicles, have we covered, got the village insurance? Okay, I'm not sure.
I don't, I think so.
That's where the problem lies.
That's the problem, is it not?
I mean, you have your own insurance, but, um.
Right, but if I'm going to Goshen to pick up our tax bills.
So you're gonna, you're deductible. Just gonna.
Should you, should you be? Your dime, not on mine.
Well, Carrie will not pay your deductible, kind of example. And I kinda, I'll probably even, think it's even further than that. So there's definitely some issues, but I, I could get the full risk, you know, all that.
Or it's just then someone who does have a village, village vehicle is then sent to pick up tax bills or whatever the case may be.
Right, for something that we do every day, all the time, you have to drive over my mother's cash.
Kim goes to the bank every day in her own car.
The board, or whoever.
However, previously, the former building inspector would do it because he had the vehicle and he would do it as a favor to Jimmy. He would go to Goshen, he would do whatever.
But, but I think there might be, you know, depositing money, et cetera, that's a treasurer's duty. I think the treasurer has to do that, I mean.
Yeah.
So the deputy clerk does that?
It's gone, always gone through the clerk's office, same building, and the clerk's office.
Okay, the water belling. The water belling clerk can't take money.
All right, but the real, real point I think you're bringing out, Catherine, is.
Is that they use their own vehicles?
Use your own vehicle. Yeah, and I think that's one of the three caveats that we just expressed. So, having said that availability, have we said that it's collective bargaining and the third piece, availability, bargaining, what was the third piece? Did you have, did you make note on it? Three pieces, collective bargaining.
Terms of collective bargaining agreement and availability.
Availability.
Subject to CBA.
Oh, we got that.
Okay.
It was the third piece to that though.
Well, then the only thing is if they, if neither of those, yeah, if you exhausted those two, then you can use your own vehicle.
Right.
I mean, this happens, you know.
Yeah, it's very common, but it was brought to our attention a while back and, uh, insurance has advised that, in fact, that's true. There are pieces of that that are not problematic, and someone should be made aware of it, but. Yeah.
So if, if someone wants to make a motion to adopt said policy and have, if they're not in the playbook, and to do that now.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
So I'll make the motion that we, uh, adopt the.
Well, hold on, we didn't take a second motion on sending Mike to the lab course.
I think we do the policy first and then when we do the motion for sending him to the.
That ties Mike Hipsman to that.
We amended. Yeah, yeah, I'm just, well, we didn't take a vote on that.
No.
No. Carrie raised a question.
So just, just table that motion until we adopt the policy.
Okay, so let's table that motion, uh, and now Irene has made a motion to create a policy subject to the parameters regarding, uh, availability and CBA and so forth. And based upon that, we need a second to support that policy of using a company vehicle.
I'll second. Got it.
Okay, call the question?
Aye.
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 Aye, so Carrie, five zip, thank you.
Now, let's, uh, let's address, uh.
Mike.
Mike Hipsman.
So I, I do, do we know that there are any CEUs, any credits that are associated with this course?
When are the credits, the Grade A operators?
He needs to, uh, for his, uh, continuance and the operator's license, the Grade A operator's license, there are certification courses and hours that are required, as I'm reading this.
So the only thing I would amend is that he's taking his own vehicle.
Yes. Well, he's not taking his own vehicle.
Right. Right.
No other vehicles available.
Correct. So I make a motion that we allow Mike Hipsman to, um, attend this course on August twenty-eighth at, uh.
attend this course on August 28th at Walk Hill Town Hall in Middletown, using a company vehicle. If available.
Yep, if available.
And provided there are no...
Issues with the collective bargaining agreement.
Anything further?
I second.
First, second?
Mm-hmm.
Call a question?
Aye.
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 Aye, so Carrie.
I would also ask that once we do this, we send memos to all department heads.
So, they're aware.
Okay, next order of business is the bond for the Monroe, the Monbassia Fire Company, actually. The Monbassia Fire Company came before the planning board and was given a site plan approval for their proposed 740-square-foot addition to their existing firehouse, construction of a new shed to house their antique fire truck, and an additional 45 parking spaces at their lot located at 526 Route 17M in the Village of Monroe. The village's engineer, John O'Rourke, has reviewed and the construction cost estimate and agreed the amount of $43,870.62 is acceptable. Anybody have any questions about that statement?
So, how is their antique fire? Is that the one that sits in Smith Clover?
No. Oh, no, 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 no.
That was a jerk.
Okay. So, I need someone to make a motion to accept that.
That we accept the bond.
And a second? Call a question?
Aye.
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 Aye, so Carrie, thank you.
John, is this the fire truck that sits at the front of Smith Clover?
No. We do that with... We set up that.
Okay, next item on the agenda is a company called Burbio. They're a municipal event calendar company, and a representative is here, I believe. Yes, sir?
Yeah.
Trustee Hall has been working with him, and will allow him to introduce him.
So, coming to the microphone is Mr. Dennis Roche. He is the founder. Can I say that? Are you the founder? Co-founder of Burbio, which is a municipal calendar app.
Great, so, yes, thank you for having me here tonight. Burbio.com is a four-year-old company. We're headquartered in Pelham, New York. I actually grew up in Bergen County, just over the border, in Ramsey. Burbio publishes in several hundred communities in the Northeast. We came up with the idea, my wife and I, we have four kids, we came up with the idea because it seemed like it was easier to book a flight to London than it was to figure out what was going on in our town. We live in the town of Pelham, of 12,000 people. And what Burbio does, and my wife actually built our technology, we pull in public data from schools, municipal, library, government sites, and we allow residents to access it in a free iOS app, Android app, website, and personalize it. They can pick up what events they want to follow, they can add events to their calendar, and if things change at the library, or the schools, or the government sites, it automatically changes through your service. So, as we've started to expand, we've actually been adopted by governments as a form of civic engagement. We are free for nonprofits, free for government, and fully automated. For the most part, people do what they're doing anyway. They enter it on the library site or the school site, and it auto-updates through Burbio. A lot of our data comes through, and some, like the school districts, don't even know we're doing it. They don't have a problem with it, but we don't need permission, it's all public. We are the official event app of White Plains, Ridgewood, New Jersey, Glen Rock, Midland Park, Fairlawn, Osining, Tarrytown, Stanford, Connecticut. Basically, governments have started adopting us, and all it requires is that... And we work with all the nonprofits. So typically, what a government will do, we'll work with someone on the government to get it set up, meaning we have the right information. An announcement will go out to residents that says this is available, and any nonprofit that wants to get on, we help them get set up. We show them how to use this service. We can pull Facebook event fees, there's lots of ways we get the information in. So, I met Trustee Hooley at the New York Merrill Conference, and then at a Rockland, the Regional County Library Event, I met your library. We also go to market by working with libraries in communities. So, we started by just publishing in towns, now we either go to new towns only by either working with governments, or libraries or both. Libraries will often promote us. So, it's very simple to promote, it's free. We also, starting next month, will be providing measurement to our partners, so we'll show how many events have been viewed on the service, and the numbers are really big. We have a great privacy policy, anyone who uses the service can opt out without... Easily. We don't sell the information, we don't sell the data. And we're really built around what people are doing on their personal calendars, so nothing is... It's all very, very private. And people who personalize it get periodic updates of what's going on. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions. You have some information on the service in front of you. We publish in Massachusetts, Connecticut, New York, Ohio, Pennsylvania, New Jersey.
So, I'd like to point out, I've downloaded the app already to my iPhone, and Girl Scouts' Heart of the Hudson Valley, which is our district here, they are on Burbio. The Monroe Free Library is in communication with Dennis and his wife, so that they can get on Burbio. So, we already have two elements of our municipality who will be using this app. It makes perfect sense for us to get on board with that, because this way, we'll also have access to what everybody else is doing, without having to make all of these phone calls, when are you planning this, when are you planning that? Everything is going to be very well-choreographed, and I think it's going to help us run much more efficiently. And I don't know if you heard this, but it's free.
We also put your school district up.
Yes. Oh, you did?
And the town of...
Did you... Are you in communications with the school district?
No, we just did it.
Not yet. Oh, you did? Okay.
We'll tell them later. I mean, if they... Some groups promote it, some groups don't, you know, you don't need to.
Okay.
That's pretty awesome.
Right?
Good job.
So...
Would this alleviate the need to use constant contact?
I don't think it will alleviate it, because what I think we need to understand is that people are getting their news and their information from a variety of sources. So, I think that this will be another tool. You know, there's people who don't... There's people who have lived in Monroe for 40 years who don't know that we have constant contact. So, they don't get their information via that way. They ask me, is it in the photo news? So, there's people who are getting their information from the photo news, people who get it only from constant contact, people get it only from Facebook, people who will hopefully get it from Burbio. So, I think it's just another element, it's not going to eliminate anything.
I think it's great to keep us all in sync, anyway, as far as events.
Our model is, when you think about things like Spotify and Waze, or any open table, it's all aggregated, it's personalized. We don't want people coming to us to ask questions. You can click on links and go out to the source sites. The last thing we want to do is... We have millions of events now on our service, we don't want anyone asking us questions about them. We want... So, the idea is incremental awareness, and it doesn't replace anything in general.
How do you get our information? Does someone in-house have to give it to you?
We would work with you. We're putting up what's automated. In your case, we would work with someone in the government to make sure we can pull it, either from Facebook or your government website. We pull a thing called calendar feeds, it's a technical thing, it's not terribly hard, but we would work with you to make sure we're getting it correctly. We also... Where we add a lot of value, actually, the rec departments at most governments, my wife and I ran our rec soccer league for years, they have an awful time getting information on the Internet for like... And we often help with key deadlines and things like that by doing that, so...
So, Smith Clover Block, Fox would be really a great...
That would be tremendous for Yak this time of year.
A great opportunity, yeah.
Yep.
Right, the website is a horror today with the weather.
Is the town LinkedIn? Are they aware of that?
The town, not yet. The town, I don't believe...
Well, the town has a data feed, so we just pulled it, like literally the staff... We do this really quick, so it's like, when I set the meeting, I called, my wife does all the work, I do the talking. And I was like, Julie, can you just put up as much as you can from Monroe? Because I'm driving up there. So, we'll circle back with you. But anything that's already in a data feed, we'll just pull, and then we work with any groups that aren't, and get it sent. We do, that's our model, and we work with... We have a local business promotion product. Typically, to the degree that all these governments... Every government I just mentioned has launched since October. You know, most governments are using Facebook to promote, and we're just a form of social media, except we're a lot better than that, or Twitter, in terms of being able to be built just for your community. We can reject ads for any reason. We're very community-based, as you can imagine, so... Because we work with all these nonprofits, so we have community standards with the advertising we put up. But really, it's a local merchant platform, that's how... It's not required, like we'll, you know, some of our towns are doing it. We have a product where any local business can put as many events as they want on the service for $12 a month. And it can...
Local business?
Local business, so we work with restaurants, you know, health clubs, SAT prep services, those sorts of things.
And how many for $12 a month?
You put as many events as you want, it gets integrated into the service, and I don't want to turn this into a sales pitch. We also work... We have banner ads. We work with real estate agents, and so, two types of ads, the promotion is the business product, and then if there's... We work with local hospitals and real estate agents and people like that who would put ads up. We're very automated, so...
What is your reach? And do you try to keep a local business here in Monroe popping up, obviously, in our feeds, or...
Well, no local business is going to want to advertise from too far away, because people aren't going to come. Generally, the merchants will advertise within about, depending on the area, 10 to 20 miles, in Lower Westchester, maybe three miles, whereas up here, it would be a little further away. So, for example, in Bergen, we did a program with their chamber, in Ramsey, they promote Otamawa and Suffolk and Allendale. And so, that's the kind of thing that they would do. But the idea would be that we would be able to have that, those events here as well. I'll finish by saying, and you guys all know this, is younger... I'm over 50, and people, so I'll say this, younger parents behave very differently digitally, and this is very mobile-centric. So, your newer residents aren't big fans of constant contact, and I say this because I'm kind of at arm's length, I'm not... I'm fine with constant contact email. So, what this allows you to do is reach some of the younger parents in the way that they're used to getting information.
I just went on and I'm already looking at when open house is for my kids. Normally, I have to wait for the school calendar, whenever that comes, and I'm like, oh, that's nice to have.
And so, I have Google, and I live on my calendar, as does probably everybody here. Would that just work right into my Google?
So, what you would do, and this is a great example, so you could go, you'd follow the calendars that you'd want, and if there was an event you wanted to go to, you can sync it to your Google Calendar.
Okay.
So, you could scroll through, say, the whole library calendar, and say, oh, I want to go to that event. And you push a button, and it goes on your... So, when you open your personal calendar, it'll have just what you want to do, and you use Burbio to kind of discover.
Okay.
So, to the degree we have ambition, as it were, on the local business front, is we want people in Monroe to be able to open up and say, look, what's going on in the nightlife, or, you know, what's going on downtown this weekend? That's what we're doing in some of the other towns.
If I choose not to see the library events, I just don't click on my library. Okay. I'm just checking.
Why would you not want to see the library events?
It says unfollowed.
It does.
Who knows where I spend my...
I may get this wrong. Yeah, no, I'm going to get it wrong. I couldn't even get...
Okay. Would you hang out for a few?
Yes.
Okay, so, just in case somebody in the audience wants to ask a question?
Great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Thanks, Dory. Great job.
Okay, next order of business is the addendum to the concert series, event application. Trustee Ali.
Since approval of the event application for the 2018 Summer Concert Series on May 1st, 2018, the Village of Monroe Activities Committee has decided to add, in conjunction with the August 11th, 2018 concert, a movie to be shown immediately following the conclusion of the Forever Ray Band, beginning at approximately 8:30 PM at the north side of Lake Street between the mill ponds. The movie title is to be determined, and is expected to conclude at approximately 11 PM. Equipment and movie rental, in addition to additional police services, is estimated to be approximately $585. I'd like to put this in the form of a motion.
I will second it.
Anything for a question?
I love this idea.
I have a question.
Please.
Do we know what movie it's going to be?
To be determined.
It's down to two. Do we need to...
Are you going to tell us what two they are, is it a surprise?
No, it's not a surprise. It's actually, it's up to everybody with what's decided. We have two good prices, obviously, we have to pay for the licensing to show the movie, and it's been decided between Goonies and Coco. So, it's...
Goonies, oh, my goodness. It was mine also, that's why I wanted her to say it. I think kids today need to see that movie, it's fantastic.
I love... And what I like about Goonies is that you're going to get the parents, who are going to reminisce about the movie, it's going to keep them interested, and you're going to get the tweens and potentially the teens, and then the other little kids are just going to be excited about watching a movie outside.
It's just, it's an all-around...
We have a... One of our residents is putting up the screen for us, doing everything. Really, this is just kind of a trial, to see how it works in the village, what the response is from families. Obviously, it goes until 11 o'clock, but movie nights can't start until dark anyway.
Right.
So, it's not... That's just how they run, so...
I think it's great, because it kind of brings you back to the feel of, like, the drive-in.
Right.
And I know Smith Clover Park had done a couple of movies, you know, years back, and it's fun to sit outside and watch it.
You know, I'm just going to bring up that August 11th night is a big night, anyway, because there's a cornhole tournament at the concert series there. We have four different trucks, we have the clown with the... It's kind of just a big night, so it rolls into it. Even though it's not a street fair, it's just a continuation of, yeah, family activities.
The trucks are going to... The food trucks are going to stay for the, as well, probably a good idea to find a popcorn vendor.
Well, will Wiggles... Will Wiggles bring...
We have the popcorn vendor.
Yeah, we have popcorn, yeah.
Oh, good, okay.
All right, great. Okay, so, we had a first, we had a second?
Oh, a favor for Goonies?
Aye to both.
Aye.
You know, when everybody leaves...
I mean, only if you sing...
No, but when everybody leaves, I'm going to do the hey, you guys thing, because I can do that really well.
So, Carrie, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay.
This is serious.
Next order of business is the Water Infrastructure Improvement Act grant. Let me just find my copy here, and unfortunately, Ernie isn't here, but maybe we can... But maybe we can, uh...
These are yours also, just in case it's in there. Are you looking for the emails?
Yep.
You want to use them?
Sure.
Here.
Okay, so our consultant Delaware Engineering, uh, has made us aware of, uh, a very large grant opportunity, uh, that we were able to potentially participate in. And, um, it requires, uh, a decent amount of work on the, uh, on their part, as well as this board, and finance and, and possible bonding and so forth. But, uh, we focused in on a couple of major areas that we know, uh, need our attention. And the first one is the, uh, transmission line from the Monbasha Lake into the, uh, water plant. And the second one has to do with mainline replacements in the, in the network distribution of our water, our treated potable water. So, um, Ernie had reached out to the consultant and, uh, they put some paperwork together to help us move this along. Uh, our council has done some diligence as well. And, uh, if I could maybe just, uh, have you?
Okay. I spoke today with, um, um, with Delaware, yeah, with Delaware Engineering. And, uh, I did take a look at this. I actually have another, a client who is applying for this very grant. They're a bit further along, they started this process in March. And the due date for this application is really September seventh. So it's going to be a really hard push to get all the work that's necessary to be done. Delaware Engineering will have to prepare a, um, like an analysis and a report that will define the scope of what needs to be done. The village will have to determine from that about how much money it will cost. Let's say it's, I know in Highland Falls, it was like a couple million dollars. So what happens then is you apply for this grant and they'll cover up to potentially sixty percent of it. Then there's also the ability to go to, um, Environmental Facilities Corporation for the other forty percent. Some portion of it is matching, I really don't know. But the first thing that you would have to do as a board, pretty much immediately, is authorize the mayor to proceed. Now, to proceed, you're going to immediately engage Delaware Engineering. You'll have to engage a bond council. And there'll be some, you know, I'll have to do some work on it. So in the, in other municipalities that are applying for this grant, you have to give an estimate of what it's going to cost for you to engage your consultants. Uh, Delaware Engineering provided an estimate of what their cost might be, and I think that was, I don't know, ten to fifteen.
Ten, ten to fifteen thousand.
Ten to fifteen thousand dollars.
I included, and I looked at what was asked of bond council in Highland Falls. Their estimate was, I think, fifteen to twenty, right? And then I added some for me. This gets reimbursed if you get the grant. So far with Highland Falls, I really haven't had much to do with it. Because what happens is, you know, in this case Delaware Engineering will, would run with the ball. I mean, there are sample resolutions, et cetera. So I just included these numbers as a catch-all. If the board decides to go forward, then the other thing you could do after you do that tonight, assuming you do, is, uh, because you have to comply with Seeker, and this is a coordinated review, you have to notice your intention to be lead agency. Delaware Engineering has provided, just before we got here, a long environmental assessment form.
Right.
In Highland Falls, it was determined after the report was issued, et cetera, et cetera, again, they were a bit further along. It was a type-two action. Here, we're not that far along, so although it's not a type-one, it may not be a type-two, so it would be an unlisted action based on this EAF. So if you first pass the resolution to move forward and apply for the grant, which would engage the engineering firm, then the next step would be to notice your intent for lead agency. Again, we have a, a, a resolution for that. That would then go back to, um, Delaware Engineering and they would circulate it, along with the EAF, to all the, uh, involved agencies. And they would then proceed to develop a report and prepare the application. You'd have to, again, figure out what the cost is going to be, what portion of it you might have to bond.
So I spoke with Mary Beth this morning. You know, this transmission line has been a huge thing for Neil and I for the last couple of years. I think that's fair to say. And, um, I know this seems like we're rushing it and, and I don't want anybody to feel that that's my intent. I know that we need to get it done and I just want to make sure that we're doing everything we need to do to focus on that transmission line. So my question is, when I spoke to her today, this sixty-fourty, um, when she talked about bonding, she, we just, I mean, we threw out just a number. The number means absolutely nothing, I'm just going to say four, four million dollars. I said, well, what if, what if we decided that we can't really do four million dollars? She said, there's the option to say, if they awarded you this grant, that you would be able to say then, you know what? We can't do four million, we can do two million. And they would adjust the grant to that. So. Is, is, am I fair to say that it would still be a sixty-fourty or then, okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
And part of the reason for kind of the, um, the urgency is that once you notice your intent to be lead agency and that gets circulated, you really can't take any other action for thirty days. And you can't really apply for the grant until you close Seeker.
Right.
So, um, and, and you can't even issue, you can't even, um, uh, issue a bond or go out for bonding until Seeker's closed. So the driving factor here is, we want to do it. Yes, no? We want to do it and we're going to at least appropriate some amount of money in, in thought anyway towards that.
Right.
And we're going to notice lead agency and that gets the whole thing started.
Okay.
And the, and the driving urgency is that thirty-day window for Seeker. So I would say that if you're not prepared to go forward tonight, but you decide you do want to go forward, you will have to have a special meeting if you don't do it tonight.
Right.
So the cost of ten to fifteen thousand dollars is for Delaware to do the study to figure out exactly what we're going to need to have done?
Fill out the application, do, um, all the paperwork, Seeker, all that stuff.
I saw in Mary Beth's, um, email communications that this same grant will be available next year as well. Will that same study, if we were to decide to go forward with this tonight, will that same study that she does, or that Delaware Engineering does, within the next thirty days, will that still be current for the following year? Or will we have to do this again?
You, you, it would, I don't know the answer to that because something might change within a year. In other words, they might very well have to update that study at some whatever additional cost. It may be that, um, the line further degenerates or something else happens and you want to include that. So it would be a good start, uh, but you probably would have to update it. And, and I'm also not sure about, um, you know, the grant application itself. If there's a particular, it has to be a recent, you know, it has to be done for the grant. But I would anticipate that you can't just pull something out a year from now and use it. It'll have to be updated.
Well, this is important, so. It is important. Yeah. I mean, we're fortunate that we had two lines. I think, you know, we've had this conversation before. There's many municipalities that don't have two transmission lines. We did. Unfortunately, um, throughout the years, we lost one. And my concern is that we could lose the only one we have. And, you know, I watched Neil the other day, we had a, a water leak and he, he really is pretty smart. I'm like, I'm amazed at the stuff that Neil knows. And we were at the library doing this whole thing with water and I, and I was shocked that he knew as much as he did about water, but is equally shocked when I came to talk to him today. You know, my dad is eighty-three and he spent eighty-three years of his life on Monbasha Lake. And so when he tells me, I think you got a leak somewhere because that lake just, it's not holding the water like it used to. It's, it's just not. And so I shared that with Neil and I think he also agreed. He's pretty up on, on it. I think there's an issue and, and I don't want to wait too long before we don't have any water. And I'm not saying that's going to happen, I, I don't, I don't know, I can't predict the future, but I think we need to be on top of this.
I agree.
So the only question though is if, because I think we all agree. Carrie? I think the only question is, do you have any inclination to, uh, I reached out to council today and I asked about doing a phone conference with Mary Beth and Irene and myself and council to see if maybe we could have, uh, any questions that may be out there. And then be, because of that or be within that, the, the opportunity to have a special meeting. I mean, we're committed to it, but is there any reason to do that? Or are we committed at this point to pull the trigger on the ten to fifteen for Delaware's component? Which brings us to the next step of the, uh, uh, issuing a negative declaration for Seeker on September fourth. And then some bonding issues and getting finance to work on things. And we have binding, we have bonding council that I'm sure our treasurer could put us in, uh...
You have bond council, right?
We do.
Yep. Okay.
So, um, you know, the pieces were all there and I believe Delaware, uh, it wouldn't shock me to believe that somewhere in their, their world, they have everything ready to go.
I wouldn't count on that so much.
Yeah.
Every application for these grants, even year to year, changes a little bit, so.
Yeah, but I, but I mean, the boilerplate of it, right? The, the basis of what they do, I mean, they do this every day and, and...
Yeah, the, the, the meetup, which would be their analysis of what has to be done, et cetera. I don't know if they have any of that prepared or not.
I know that they did a, a major, I wasn't on the board at the time, but they did a major study back in thirteen.
Yes, we did.
And that's how they came around to, uh, bonding, somebody dollars and, and doing a water infrastructure project. I don't know where the plant or the transmission line figured into it at that time or how the information was disseminated. But at the end of the day, I'm going to bet they know a lot about this, this system that I certainly don't know.
One hundred percent they do.
So.
One hundred percent.
I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm still committed to doing a conference call just because we, you know...
And I agree, and I, I, like I said to you today, I think everybody needs to get educated. I, I don't want it to feel that I'm pushing you to say, let's, let's pay ten or fifteen thousand dollars to, to start the process. I'm just saying we can't kick the can down the road anymore. We, whether we're going to seek a grant or we're going to figure out how to get the money to do it another way, whether it's, you know, running a sleeve through to patch it, whatever it is, we just have to, as a board, make an effort to do something.
Okay, so the board would like to move forward?
Yes.
With the conference call, or?
I'm, I'm asking, move forward or a conference call?
Can I just suggest this? I mean, when I talked to Mary Beth today, she said you have twenty-four hours. Because we are in such a time crunch, there's a thirty-day whole thing. If you're, if you, if you want to have the conference call with her, you should do it. And then can we advise him after that if he?
Well, I think you can make a motion with the provision.
You're going to, you're going to possibly appropriate money. I'm concerned that you would, and, and it's not an insignificant amount. At the very least, it's, it's, it's ten to fifteen thousand dollars. You know, I don't think you can authorize, I would not suggest authorizing the mayor or making it contingent upon the mayor's discussion with you.
Okay.
I just wouldn't. I would call a special meeting in twenty-four hours of at least three of you to do this publicly to appropriate the money to go forward. Now, on the other hand, you can do it tonight. And after the mayor's call, if he decides, you know what, this is not a good idea, you can call a meeting to rescind it.
Okay.
So, um, you know, it's, so it's, it, if you think it's not going to be a good idea, then I would say, you know, call a special meeting to adopt it. If you think it is going to be a good idea and, and the mayor's probably not going to hear anything terribly negative, then I would do it tonight. And just on the off chance, if you have to, you can call a special meeting to rescind it. Even if it's just a call to, um...
I think the possibility of getting sixty percent of a grant to help pay for a transmission line is awesome.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. For me, it's a win-win, but that's just me.
Okay.
And you just might want to, you know, again, make sure when you call her. I, I don't know exactly what the mechanics are. Sixty percent, is some of it match? I, I'm not sure.
Well, that's, that's what I'd like to do.
Yes.
Okay?
But I, I...
But in the interest of time, to your point, we can make the, um, resolution and we can adopt it. And then I can, after the conversation, get back and circulate through the clerk, uh, my findings and see if that changes anybody's ideas. And if it doesn't, then we pull the trigger and we're on our time clock.
And then you're, then you've started. And if it does, then you call a special meeting and you just rescind it.
Okay.
I like that idea.
All right, so my first act here, I believe, is to read the resolution authorizing myself, the mayor, to seek the, yes?
You want me to go through this real quickly?
Please.
And summarize it?
Yep.
Uh, and I will, uh, give a, get a good conference. To seek the water and the other water, please, the, 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 the... So you start a conference with this ten minutes. And essentially what you are doing here is authorizing the mayor to seek this draw grant where it's necessary. And, uh, the first whereas is that you can bring the public address where that's really necessary to be that similar to the mayor. That, um, and this is based on Delaware's engineering determination, that one of your two water mains has a leak that's inoperable. You've already expended four million in capital improvements. And that's resulted in a burden to the taxpayers. Here, you might be able to get sixty percent of that in terms of the grant.
Due to the burden.
Mm-hmm. And would lower that burden. I also included here the opportunity to, um, apply for New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation to finance the other forty percent. So that wouldn't be another grant, but I think what they offer is low-cost loans to, uh, help municipalities do this. The estimate of the cost to have Delaware Engineering support the village's WIIA grant, um, and that is the Water Infrastructure Improvement Grant. It's like two hundred and forty million dollars available, I believe, for this to municipalities. Their cost would be, um, an estimate of ten to fifteen thousand dollars to prepare the application and do the work in, in terms of that. I've also included, um, uh, you would require assistance from the village bond council and the village attorney. And I've estimated that to be fifteen to twenty thousand dollars just based on bond council estimates. And what I, to the, the village of Highland Falls for the same type of grant. And then the amount of work that I've done so far on that grant, which hasn't been a, a great deal frankly. Whereas the village desires to seek funding assistance to help decrease the amount of bond monies used for the village water system improvements, now therefore be it resolved that the mayor is hereby authorized to prepare and submit a WIIA grant application with the assistance of the village consultants as needed and to execute a funding agreement with, uh, uh, New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation and all necessary associated documents as required, um, to get that other forty percent financing and obligate any and all village funds necessary to meet any required local match under the WIAA program. So, uh, someone needs to put that in the form of a motion.
I will put that in the form of a motion.
To all in favor?
Yep.
Aye.
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 Aye, to Carrie.
Okay, since you've done that, um, the next step then would be to, again, as I described earlier, you have to comply with Seeker. Can't really do anything else until you do, including the bonding. So, uh, the village, um, Delaware Engineer provided me with a, basically a, a resolution for notice of intent to be lead agency. And that essentially says, you've reviewed the EAF, which, uh, Delaware prepared and sent to you. They've determined that it's an unlisted action. And upon this acceptance of the notice of intent, they will circulate the notice as well as the EAF to all other, um, involved agencies, which would probably be the DEC. I'm actually not sure exactly. Probably the DEC. And certainly that would then be included in the, um, in the grant application. So let me go through this real quickly. Whereas the village of Monroe owns and operates a water system and it's comprised of the various elements of that water system. And whereas an engineering, engineering study has identified that one of the, um, transmission lines is broken and, uh, therefore it's compromised. And whereas the village has recently expended four million to, um, in bonded capital to try and improve the water system. And here you have an opportunity to get the sixty percent. And whereas the village has conducted an initial review of the water system improvements as required under six NYCRR, part six seventeen dot six, to determine if the action is subject to Seeker and to make a preliminary determination as to the type of action under Seeker. And whereas to assist in making determination of the type of action, the village has caused part one of the long environmental assessment form to be prepared. And whereas the long EAF indicates that the project does not appear to meet either the type-one or type-two, um, thresholds under Seeker, now therefore be it resolved. One, the funding and construction of improvements to the village water system is subject to Seeker. Two, the improvements do not appear to meet the one or two, uh, type-action thresholds. Therefore, it is determined that is an unlisted action. Three, as outlined in the EAF, um, more than one agency is going to, uh, be involved in the funding permitting and approval of this action. And the village intends to seek WIA, WIIA and possibly, um, EFC funding for the project. Therefore, you have to do a coordinated review under the Seeker regulations. Four, the board of trustees declares its intent via this resolution to be lead agency for conducting that Seeker review. Five, as required...